The committee, the whole meeting for October 7th, 2014. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins, absent. Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace? Here. The first item that we have on our committee meeting this evening is under the Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And tonight we have the Artis Senior Living of Bartlett, Mayor Jay Hicks. On behalf of Artis Senior Living, the subject site is at 991 South Route 59, east side of Route 59, south of Apple Valley Drive. And with that, I think I can turn this over to Jim and let him further elucidate.
Thank you, trustee Cammerer. This is a project that you have seen before. It's gone with the committee. It's Artis Senior Living. They want a preliminary subdivision, preliminary PUD plan for Lot 1, and a special use for a PUD, for a memory care facility to be built on said Lot 1. It's a 72-unit memory care facility. One-story building consists of approximately 3.26 acres. And then the remaining Lot 2 will be 5 acres, which is vacant and subject to a use list that they have proposed. And then Lot 3 is 1.65 acres, and that's the detention area. The site plan was reviewed, and the public hearing was held by the Plan Commission on the last meeting that we had, and I can't remember the date, but I was there, September 11th. The Plan Commission had considerable discussion on the project. There was a lot of residents there. The minutes of the meeting are attached. Generally, the residents were asking for a fence to be constructed on the north side of the detention basin, right here. This afternoon, I talked to the residents, who, the spokesperson for the residents, Julie Kappa Dikakis, who's mentioned in the minutes. The residents no longer want a fence there. They believe that it is safer to have the detention pond open and will rely on just the site being prepared and landscaped, and just so that they can view the detention area rather than cover it up. But there was a number of conditions that the Plan Commission recommended, among those being the village engineer's approval of the preliminary engineering plans, the IDOT access, right-in, right-out on 59, submittal of final subdivision and final PUD plan within a year, continue to communicate with the commercial property owners to the north to possibly get a future access point. At that point of development of Lot 2, that the right-in, right-out access could be reevaluated. There's an installation requirement of a 10-foot-wide bike path along the east side of 59. And then the list of permitted uses is attached as an exhibit for any ordinance, and that use list basically is for additional residential offices, medical buildings, those types of uses. It's attached in here. And that final landscape plans be approved in addition to their findings of fact. That's the sum and substance of it. The minutes are attached. We had a court reporter at those meeting. At the meeting, you can see there's a lot of comments, and the petitioner is here and ready to answer any of your questions.
Is there any questions from the board?
Have we had our traffic engineer take a look at traffic flows?
At this particular site?
Yes.
He didn't look at this.
Okay.
No. They can, you can ask them about the traffic access and that.
Right. Well, I think at the concept plan stage, we talked about this notion that somehow you're going to funnel traffic through the parking lot of the businesses located generally to the north of the subject property. And then that's going to be a way to direct traffic ultimately south on Route 59. And I would really like to know from our traffic engineer, you know, what his thoughts are about directing commercial traffic through a parking lot, because it seems relatively ridiculous to me, but I'm not a traffic expert.
Well, they don't have access through that parking lot yet.
Right. That's one of the conditions, and we're still talking about that.
They've been trying to seek that, whether they'll get it. I think it was more in general, related to Lot Number 2 when it develops. The petitioner, you can ask him. I don't think they need that for this particular use.
You know, I share a similar concern about the right-in, right-out only to this facility. I understand what trustee Ranky's saying. I hadn't quite thought of it that way. I'm not sure what I think about that. I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that some developer's going to come along and successfully build 20 or 30 homes behind this facility, and then there's a right-in, right-out only onto Route 59. I wouldn't want to live there. And I probably wouldn't want to patronize a business that has something like that. I just, and I understand it's a kind of strange parcel. It's a strange location. I'm not against the business per se. It just, it doesn't sit real right with me, and I don't know what the solutions are. I think the, I think our Planning Commission did a great job trying to core down to this and try and find some solutions, and it sounds like, Jim, you and your staff have done the same. I'm not opposed to the idea of the business. I'm just, I'm really cautious about this whole right-in, right-out thing, and about the idea, well, we're going to put something back there, but we don't know what it is. And when this came before us several months ago, I had asked the petitioner, I said, well, what do you think about putting back there? And it was kind of, well, we're not sure, and we've got some different ideas. And I understand, you know, you don't want to necessarily nail yourself down on a business at this point, but I guess that's, that's really part of one of my hangups, is that we're going to have this giant, not giant, we're going to have this relatively large vacant parcel of land back there that it's like nothing's, I just don't see anything going on back there. That's my concern.
I agree with trustee Shipman, and I mean, Lot 2 is larger than Lot 1.
Right.
So this is, Lot 2 is not an afterthought. It's not a secondary issue. It's actually larger than Lot 1. And I understand that the petitioners have, you know, given us a list of possible uses, but again, those uses aren't before us, so we don't know what it's going to look like.
Well, my thought would be, at this point in time, over the last however many years, that property stayed vacant, and there's nothing saying that even if they do build, that anyone will ever come into that back area. I know we've got to look towards the future, but at least we'd have something in a very useful business that would help a lot of people, I think. Even if that back piece of property is vacant, it's sitting vacant as we speak. So, you know, I don't know what, I mean, yes, there's potential to have something else come in and be there. I understand that, but I don't think we want to not have someone come in with a very useful business plan just because we think that the back piece of property will be developed in a poor manner of some sort. I think, I think the benefits outweigh the negatives, so to speak, with this facility.
There was a farmhouse on here before?
There was one, yes.
How long ago?
Been 18 years or so since it's, it probably was torn down about 15 years ago, Brian.
And no one's really looked at this piece of property since then?
The last development proposal that we had approved for this never was built, and we haven't, we've had a couple of people ask about it, and we did a concept for a residential development one time, and then that was before the downturn in the economy.
So that was 10, 12 years ago?
Yeah, probably.
Want to bring business in Bartlett? We, you know, we can worry a little bit what's going on in back. These people are here, and I think it's a good addition to our community.
I think we have the issue of what's going on in Lot 2, but I think we also have the primary issue of the right-in, right-out. What I'd like to know is, what's going to happen with this traffic that wants to head south? So, for example, are they going to hang a big U-turn and use Apple Valley? In which case, are we now creating another brain tree situation? So in a few years, the folks on Apple Valley are going to come here, and we're going to wring our hands and say, well, there's nothing we can do because we didn't look at that. So maybe people are going to make a left into the Home Depot parking lot, and then use that area to turn around and head south. I don't know, but I think that's something that we need some more information on before we make this decision. I don't want to create another brain tree.
Well, I know that, but I think the impending change with IDOT at 59 and Sterns, where there'll be a dedicated lane to be able to make a U-turn, would solve the problem with people wanting to go south who had to go north and then make the U-turn and go south.
Are they going to go all the way up to Sterns Road and then make the U-turn?
I think they would have to.
Oh.
I think the issue that we had, the first time this was presented to us, is we had a concern about the access to the second lot. Because we didn't have the forethought years ago, the first lot will not be able to connect to a shopping mall that was there, because we didn't futuristically look at, they would need access to Apple Valley. If we do that, and history repeats itself, we're going to have Lot 2 back there, no access, nobody's going to want to do anything back there. So I think we owe it to ourselves to not commit the same error twice and require some kind of access plan to that second lot.
We've got a few questions. You, how many other sites do you have roughly the same scale? Yeah, why don't you come up to the microphone? Thank you.
Good evening. Jay Hicks, Artis Senior Living. What was that question again?
So, how many other sites do you have roughly the same scale? I mean, not double, I mean, anything similar to this in size?
I'd say, under construction and development, probably 19.
Okay. And are any of those at all, any of those open at all yet?
Not yet. We've got one that's ready to open, Cincinnati, and one under construction, in Boca. But we've developed this building very similar over the years, but not as artist. So we have a lot of experience with this size building and this programming of a building.
What I was getting at is, okay, and then how many people are in this again?
72 residents.
72 residents, of which, on average, how many own their own cars?
Zero.
Okay. So it's families visiting and people working there that we're worried about?
That's correct.
Okay. Any given time, 72, how many are visiting?
We, we'll have excess parking there. I mean, I wish we had more traffic. I wish we had more visitors. It's just the nature of our use.
What I'm getting at is, you know, this guy has 10 members of the family, everyone owns a car, or this guy has one, and he never visits. So, I mean, we're trying, we don't have, we don't have a count, so.
Right. I can say, having, having worked with this use and worked with assisted living, in the hierarchy of senior uses, obviously independent living, where seniors own their cars and drive, the traffic counts probably aren't very dissimilar from a multifamily project. As you move across that continuum, nursing homes are a little different. This isn't a nursing home. We don't have a rehab function that has people from the outside coming to use it. It's not general assisted living, which has higher trip generation. It's on the lowest end of trip generation. I've worked with, with assisted living and memory care assisted living on and off my entire career. I've never had a problem with traffic or parking being a problem, just given the nature of our use. Sometimes there are other challenges locating them in residential neighborhoods and the perception that it's a commercial use, but traffic has never been a problem when I've worked with this use before.
Okay.
And just as it relates to the, I just speak to the issue of the back. You know, this property has sat idle for a long time, and I know a number of people have taken a look at it. I like to think I've cracked the code on it, insofar as I think we found a use that sets a good trend for the development of the site, that I think the neighbors have found acceptable. I think the prior plan was much more dense at three stories, much more traffic, much closer to the neighbors. We set the tone at the corner with our single-family, excuse me, single-story residents. The potential uses in the back, we drew that from your own ordinance, and the intent was to take out the more noxious, controversial uses, and to set a trend line for development that puts it back on the tax rolls, contributing to the community, providing a much-needed service, knowing that what goes on the back will come through this same rigorous, very rigorous process that you have to evaluate. As it relates to access to the north, it was a nice-to-have. We dutifully looked into it. We don't need it for our use, and nobody is less interested than having a traffic or parking problem than we do. We don't need access to the north. If we bring a user and a potential user for Lot 2 that feels they need it, we fully expect them to be subjected to the rigor of all your analysis, including traffic, and what other traffic improvements and connections may be necessary for them. But we feel very confident it's just not necessary for the low impact of our development.
I think I might have been incorrect when we just had the, made the statement about the, to make it, to go south now, we'd have to go to Sterns Road. In actuality, we'd be going to Apple Valley Drive, and I think what I heard from IDOT, and chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's legal to make a U-turn at any stoplight in Illinois, isn't it?
As long as it says no, it doesn't say no.
Doesn't say no U-turn.
It's designated, it can't be assigned by, but you're right, it's a legal term to make as long as it's safe to do so, versus liability associated with an accident. So in theory, someone.
So in theory, someone could go out of this facility, go up to Apple Valley Drive, as if they were going to turn into Home Depot and make a U-turn and go south. That would not be illegal.
If it's space, be illegal, though.
Okay.
As long as it's being safe to leave.
And that's.
It's a nice.
And that's, that's the route that you would propose, that people had to make a southbound, to head southbound out of your facility, that that's what they would do?
That's a potential. I would hope they'd stop there and shop and generate some sales tax while they're at it, but that's just me.
Maybe, maybe.
I'll just reiterate. I have no objection to this business per se. On a personal standpoint, I'm struggling with a family member who has memory issues, and so I certainly see the benefit, you know, not only to us as a community, but to us, as you said, getting a property back on the tax rolls. I see all of the benefits. My concern, again, goes back kind of to Lot 2 and the fact that, for lack of a better phrase, if you will, the prime part of the slot, in other words, the frontage of Route 59, is now kind of used up, and Lot 2 is going to have, is going to be a pretty undesirable, from my perspective, a fairly undesirable piece of property for somebody to use because it's behind a facility, it's got the right-in, right-out, we've got some neighbors to the north that at this point don't want to do any kind of connection. And so, yes, I'd love to see something developed on there sooner rather than later, but at what cost, you know? In other words, it hasn't been filled in 20 years. If we waited two years, would something else come along that would take the entire parcel? I don't know. I don't know. Those are the questions I'm struggling with.
Jim, have we ever had, like, a strip mall developer ever look at this, where they thought that they could make this work?
No, not that I recall. It's always been a residential.
Yeah, I have to somewhat echo trustee Shipman's, or Mart, Shipman's comments, and I've given this a lot of thought since you guys came in originally. And I love the fact that a business like yours is coming in. I think it's good for the general overall area, because I do believe there are some visitors that will hang out, go to lunch, participate in some of our areas. But I also weigh that against this being a prime 59 location. We don't have a lot of 59 frontage road in Bartlett. What we do have has some earmarks for other businesses. So again, I guess one of the things that I'd asked you before, and I don't recall the exact answer, but had you given any thought to moving your particular building to the back of this lot?
We had talked about it, but I think we like the frontage as well, and I think by us moving to the front, I think it, it sort of directs the development in the back to be something less intense. In terms of interest in the back, we've made no efforts to market it, and I have three letters of intent for people interested in putting single-family or duplexes back there. And that's without any effort on my part.
Is it primarily because they like the fact that it probably will be fairly quiet back there? People will only go in there if they live there?
I suspect that's the case. I haven't asked them, but I think, you know, which issue do you tackle? I mean, you've got single-family homes adjacent in the back, and I think in terms of being a use that's compatible, or at least a use on Lot 2 that's compatible to there, I think that certainly sends it in that direction. You get the benefit of us paying taxes, we have the benefit of, by many measures, being a residential use, but also generating tax revenue, which I think can be the best of both worlds, particularly when you consider the dearth of uses like ours in Bartlett and what we represent by being in town.
The residents that were in the Planning Commission, I think they had their addresses, but could you point out where they, where they live at, that had a concern?
Majority of them live along this north.
The north side?
Yeah. I want to say it would be first read, and a couple of them here, multiple live.
Along that north property boundary, mostly content, concerned with the detention area.
Yeah.
Not the use of that property, of this property.
I would say that as far as more intense residential use, it would be difficult to support it with just a right-in, right-out. This use, which is less intense, can probably survive out of right-in, right-out. That may mean that the back portion remains vacant for some time even with some of those less intense uses, and you're concerned that it'll sit there vacant. It may be until there's some cross-access with the property to the north or the church to the south, that it'll sit vacant. I raised the issue is that I didn't want, I wanted it clear that if this is getting approved, that with those uses, that there's no tacit approval to any of those uses without this board being satisfied from a traffic standpoint as to any use of Lot 2.
And that's been my understanding all along. Yes, I mean, the intent has never been to put the proverbial camel's nose under the tent. We do assisted living. Given the nature of the property, I had to buy the whole thing. We're not in the habit of buying more than we need and selling. I think it's a classic case of not letting, you know, the very, the perfect be the enemy of what I think is the very good, when you consider all things. It'll sit vacant until somebody comes in with a compatible use that can meet all your performance criteria for traffic, access, and I'm content to live with those conditions, and that would be a contract purchaser's obligation. And as far as I'm concerned, the intent nor the reality of what you're faced with tonight obligates you to do anything in the back. We just intended, in an effort to be helpful, to frame the discussion, the future discussion somewhat, not somehow get you to bite on something and make a commitment. And my understanding of your process is, you're not doing that. They have to meet the rigor of your process with whatever comes in.
And I would think that the possibility of having someone else come in and take over this entire 10 acres, say a big block store of some sort, with this right-in, right-out, it's going to be very limited that. It can't happen. And so even with a strip mall, say someone comes in, wants to develop a strip mall, you've got right-in, right-out. It's not going to happen. And so we have the opportunity to bring in something that would be useful to our people in this town and in the community. And if the back lot sits vacant, we have the same as what we have right now, and nothing's really changed. I, I think we have an opportunity to really move forward and see a good business come into town that's going to benefit a lot of people with memory problems, and I'd hate to see us lose it. Any other discussion? Any other questions for the petitioner?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I would, we like to go on with this at this point in time. I, I think we should go ahead and let them move on for the preliminary subdivision, preliminary PUD plan, and the special use permit for the PUD, subject to the following conditions and findings of fact.
Jim, what's, what's right across the street? Is that, is that buildable land across the street?
No.
That's front, right?
The property here is all forest preserve.
Forest preserve?
Yeah. Your Home Depot property starts.
And that bank is back there, right?
Right.
So that's all forest preserve, all the way along there?
All the way down, yes.
Okay. So the only question I would have, and just thinking far out in the future, if somebody came along and decided they wanted to build, you know, something you could drive into, like a U-shaped strip mall into the back of that lot where you had shops around the U, and then had an exit out, shared exit by Living Lord Lutheran Church, something like that could happen, where you could go, then you'd have all access to the mall?
It could happen, if you had an access down here, cross-access point here. Somebody could come back in, and I know that in the past, people have looked at purchasing one of these homes and cutting a road through there, through to Apple Valley. That's been discussed in the past, but it never, never went through. That's another potential for getting access up here that would allow them to develop that back.
Okay, thanks.
Unless there's other questions, that's all that I have with that, then.
All right. Clear direction for that?
We've got it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. The next item on our committee, the whole agenda, is finance and golf. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item we have is the economic development video proposal. So with that, let's turn it over. Okay, so you want to show us, it's my understanding that you want to show us clips of.
Some really cool things.
Some really cool things, okay.
We, at the strategic plan, you'll recall, and we budget for accordingly, there was a very clear direction for us to step up our economic development profile. And we talked about some kind of an advertising effort to be placed on several different places, print ad and a visual ad. And so we've spent some time looking at some different companies, and we think we've got one that will work well. We showed some of this to the mayor, because we think will, he'll have some visibility in this as the head of Bartlett. And so what we thought we would do, Paula, you can talk about the ad first if you'd like, and then we've got some clips from the company. Or do you want to look at the clips first?
Let me just kind of give you a little hint at what you're going to look at. We had met with a couple of local video production companies, and we liked the graphics and the film pieces from Mode Project. And what I have for you is three video clips. The first one is a compilation of their graphic and design work. It's a minute long, for some of the local and national brands that they've done work for, as well as for some of the public entities that they have done marketing pieces for. And the second one is about a minute long. It is a piece that they did for CMAC, the Chicago Metropolitan Planning Agency. And then the third one is Valerie's favorite, and it'll probably make you hungry. We had looked at.
Got the chairman's permission to show it.
So why don't I do, give you the first one here. Just want to make it large enough so you can see, and center it on the, on the screen a little better.
Do we put our headphones on now?
It's not the UN. I'm hoping that the sound will, you plug me back in.
Turn it to a never.
Yeah, just turn it up just a little.
Oh, sure.
What are you, 70?
I think he's being facetious. I thought I was just...
My fillings are still rattling.
Paula doesn't mess around with her presentation.
Oh, man.
You're going to go big, right, Paula?
Got to catch your attention. This is the second one, this is the CMAC, this is CMAC.
CMAC, the planning organization. This was about sustainability and...
Local food sourcing to restaurants, and actually, one of our farmers market farms is in it.
I'm Lloyd Nicholson, and I'm the guy who started Nichols Farm and Orchard. There's a definite interest in locally grown produce. There's more demand today than there was when I started.
Really enjoy talking to people who actually grow produce, the way they grow it. I love really hearing their experiences.
This week in produce, we're outside of our reach, and we're offering $40 dollars a day.
And the final one that I have to show you, it's about two and a half minutes, it's called the Donut Vault. And this is...
Can we lower the lights for this one?
Give it a little full screen there. And let me start.
My friend told me about it, we're actually leaving Chicago soon, and he said that we have to try this before we did.
You should draw a five-day, it's like usual line, but there's no way I wasn't going to try it, and I would dig it.
You know, I walked by one day, it was, it was closed, and I was just looking at the sheets, and I didn't know that it was going to be that way.
That's just not fair.
My school fives, I worked hard in town today, so I'm going to be a little vague.
But the proposal that was in your packet from Mode Project outlines a process of working with our staff to develop that economic development content that allows us to put it on the website, that Tony can embed in the materials that he sends out, and also take with him when he goes out of Village Hall. Focusing on the film and graphic and some voice overlays in the production. It is for $18,800 roughly, and that's what's before you.
I'm not so worried about the video, I'd like to see us get the donut shop.
Yeah, that'd be good. That'd be good.
Town center could use a donut shop.
There you go.
We brought samples, right?
Paula, I know all these, these two companies are obviously professional companies, but I actually recently had a patient come to me and said, "Have we, as a village, considered one of the schools, actually, South Elgin, whose academy, I guess you would call it, is, I think it's Beacon Academy, or I think is the name of it, and that happens to be, they are a video producing, they do video and communications at the, at South Elgin." And she showed me one of the actual films that the students and the instructor at the school had done, and I thought, "Well, that's something we haven't pursued, that's something we haven't looked at," as whether there'd be the possibility of forming a partnership with, before we spend the money on a professional company. Have we thought about, now that I'm bringing it up, potentially entertaining, pursuing, or at least looking into, the possibilities of working with like a high school, especially South Elgin, since people are kind of up in arms about the taxes they pay, and it's going to South Elgin, I think, and to the U-46 School District, obviously. This might be one way that we could utilize some of that money that the taxpayers in our community pay towards U-46, help the students. I thought that the quality, the work that they did was quality work. I think it would be something we could certainly look into before we just jump into signing a contract with a, with a company that we haven't ever pursued any other options.
We haven't looked at that, and we'd be happy to do that in place of this, as you say, jump into it. Let me just remind you, this did come from the strategic plan, so we've been working on this for some time, but no, we haven't looked at that, and we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think it might be something that we could see some benefits from, if it was to work out, and I'm not saying it will, but if it was, I think there could be a lot of benefits for the village and for U-46, and the students that are involved with this program, so.
I would have a little bit of a reservation to compare a company that makes something like these to what, and I'm not saying anything against these students, but these guys have obviously worked with multiple major companies, UPS and other name brands, and I'm not discounting what you're saying, I'm just saying I would have reservations about them knowing what the business world really, really would like to see. That would be my biggest reservation with, with spending that amount of time. And as the administrator pointed out, we did make it a specific part of our strategic plan to develop a business attraction strategy, process and marketing mechanism to enhance our profile in the business community.
That's true.
That being said, you know, I'd be happy to look at one of the videos or example or something, but the only fear that I would have with requesting, I love the fact that we would give them a project to do, but I really, I guess what I'd, what I'm saying is I would definitely want this to be done as professionally as possible. Like, it's got to be slick, it's got to be cuttable, so you can actually do a YouTube, so it's a shorter version of what we're going to make. I don't know that you're going to get that flexibility and pliability, and I think you'll be answering more, asking, answering more questions than, than not, if you're going to go with the students, that's my opinion.
I have no doubt that the production values are outstanding. I think it's a great idea to involve students at the local schools. Trustee Martin had brought this up a couple of sessions ago, having like a contest and having people participate. So I think there's ways to open this up to, to the community in other ways. My big concern is, what is our message? How are we going to use this? How often do we think that people will click on it on the internet? How often is Tony going to trade shows? Perhaps Tony could join us one evening. I think it'd be great if he joins us more often, too, because he's the point man, so I'd like to hear his, his input on what people at trade shows are asking him about Bartlett, what he thinks our selling points are, because this video shouldn't exist in a vacuum. It's a good idea, we talked about it, strategic planning, it's a, it's a strong idea, but what are we actually going to say? If we're going to invest the money, we're going to invest the time, we should have a point and have a target and try to get it.
Absolutely. I can tell you a little bit about some of those conversations, because Tony and I did this together. We met with the different production companies, and what we told them was that the purpose of this video is to show that it's worth your investment to do business in Bartlett. Tony put together a number of bullet points that he hammers home when he's out selling Bartlett. We have great demographics, we have great location for traffic, we have a burgeoning food sector out at the Business Park, they call that cluster, is the term that Tony uses. We've talked about being an underserved marketplace. Residents in this community would like to shop in Bartlett, they need some place to shop in Bartlett. So those were some of the things that we were keyed into when we were requesting the companies put together proposals for us. And we told them that we wanted something like the mayor said, that had some flexibility that could be on our website, under the EDC pages, because we're really looking at the audience for people who are looking to come and locate their business in Bartlett. We talked about utilizing our local business owners to do those voiceovers, and prompting them for, "Why did you come to Bartlett? Why did you invest here? Why, what do you like about being here?" Those kinds of things. So that's kind of the focus that we were pinpointing up.
And one of the things... One of the things that we liked about this company, you'll notice in all three of those clips, there's no talking heads. You know, there's voiceovers, but they're showing what the voice is talking about in a very professional way, and, and we thought that that really was, was catching people's attention as supposed to watching someone stand up there and talk.
And Tony also did mention, when we talked about the flexibility of time, it's different when it's on the website, maybe you can have, you know, two and a half minutes, but when he's off at ICSC or, or working a conference, it needs to be much shorter, and it needs to really grab, because, because people are walking past him. And so it needs to have some visual interest, where people will stop and look, but they'll only stop and look for a minute, and that's when he has to grab them. So those were some of the things that we talked about.
Okay, when I, when this matter comes back to the village board, assuming that we want to bring this before the village board, I'd like to see a little bit, I'd like to firm up those talking points, and I think it would be helpful to have Tony here to talk to us about what he needs to sell Bartlett.
Sure.
And I think we could also probably try to figure out ways to engage the community, engage students, use those resources.
Yeah, I think, we may want to consider reaching out to the audiovisual, I think that's their specialty, right, at South Elgin, and saying, "Hey, we've got this project that we think we're going to be moving forward with, would it be something that you could maybe walk alongside and learn from, from this professional outfit, you know? Go to Mode Project and say, "Hey, we'd like to get some benefit from our students out of this as well."
Sure.
Maybe that we could have them tag along, maybe they'd have some input, that we'd get the best of both worlds. And now, I think it's important that the board understands that their cost for this was way higher than the 13,000 something. It started out at like 28,000 or something?
Yes.
And because we are one of the few municipalities, they've worked with staff, I believe negotiated it down to what I think is an amazing number, 13,000...
Eight hundred and fifty.
Eight hundred and fifty bucks, and for a professional video, that's, that's pretty impressive.
I had a question, I can't find anywhere in here where it specifies how long the video is going to be.
It's, it's going to be at least three minutes, and then we'll, we'll chop it in different pieces.
So not, so their final piece will be like three minutes, and then we'll tell them, "Oh, by the way, give us the edited version so that Tony has something to play with, too." Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we'll, we'll plan that as we go with them.
We'll end up with more than one to use?
Oh, yeah.
Two or three usually.
Yeah, something you can...
Fifteen and a thirty-second, and sometimes forty-five.
Like, all the clips that I showed you, all those one-minute clips, like the last two, they're much longer pieces. They're parts of much larger things.
Well, no, I, I realize that. And then I guess my other comment was just, I think Trustee Cameron brings up an interesting idea, although I agree with some of the other things that we've said here, if we're going to spend time and effort on a video to promote business within the village, I do think it's important that it be at a certain competitive level. But I do agree that I think, I think it's a great idea that we involve the local high school in some level, or perhaps they can do a video for some other purpose within the community, or something like that.
I was thinking about Trustee Martin's comments from the previous meeting, you know, we're launching a new website in a few months, a spruced-up website, we're really excited about it, and I thought a contest like that, or, or something where we're asking people to produce videos, to put those on the website to drive new eyes to our site, would really be a great marriage.
We could go viral.
I don't think you can ever have...
Viral.
In today's world, you can never have too much video, right?
We go viral, we can earn money for the village. There you go.
Okay, so it sounds like you folks have some, some recommendations, some questions from us. My suggestion is that we bring this matter back whenever you're ready on the committee level, and then we'll discuss that a little bit more before it heads to the board, so we can further evaluate this?
We'd be happy to.
Makes sense?
Good.
Okay, all right. So that's item number one. Item number two is the Bartlett Hills renovation update. Scott, you're up.
I just wanted to note first that that video contest is actually being discussed at the next EDC meeting, so we'll have some additional information very shortly.
Who is this guy?
The next, the EDC, October 13.
October 13, so good, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason why you can't do both of these events. The more video, I mean, the more things we can look at that promotes, and somebody, something catches the board's eye and says, "Wow, that's really good."
Put it on our TV channel, too.
Yeah. Good, thanks, Scott.
Sorry to interrupt the flow of the conversation there, but moving on to the golf course construction, it was also an idea that was generated by the strategic plan meeting, and the board had asked us to look at some numbers and do some homework, and we did that, and we brought it to the September 16th committee of the whole meeting. And then you had some additional questions relative to some of the numbers and some of the comparables. So we looked at some of the comparables, and as you can see, there's a chart with golf course wedding venues in the area and their capacity. And we looked at, as we said in the last meeting, the difference between a wedding of 200 and 240 would be an additional $750, which doesn't equate very well into the 250,000, as you had pointed out. So we did a, really where the revenue would come would be extra bookings, and those extra bookings, primarily weddings, would be between the 200 and 240. So we looked at our profit margin on the weddings that we currently have, and staff guesstimated that we would look at about, could comfortably say we would have eight extra bookings, at the average profit of 4,125, and we did a wedding of 220, that would bring in $33,000 a year in extra revenue just for the weddings. But it's also important to note that for banquets and weddings, a lot of corporations and brides, obviously, will book these particular events between 12 and 18 months in advance. So the money and the return that you would see... So the money and the return that you would see, and that wouldn't actualize for another 12 to 18 months after the construction period, because of the dates that are already taken up, the events that are already planned, and things of that nature. Another area that we looked at was the expansion of the bar lounge. That's an expansion that you would see a return on investment, a much smaller return on investment, but it would be one that you would see immediately, would have an immediate impact on the clubhouse. And we did some numbers, and we looked at the square footage and the amount of guests, amount of patrons that would go up from 26 to 42. And the last year, the bar and lounge made $103,000. And when we factored in the square footage and the amount of people, we figured that that number would go up to $159,000. When you take that and you have a 20% profit margin, that would be about $11,200. And those numbers that I gave you for the dining room and the bar lounge are the hard costs. Some of the soft costs and some of the intangibles, I'll go through right now, and feel free to interrupt me anytime you have a question. This expansion would give staff the ability to host some smaller golf outings that we can't do right now, because if we have a wedding, let's say 180 to 200 people, we can't accommodate some of those smaller golf outings of 20 to 28 people because of the size of the space. So this would give us a little more flexibility to do a couple additional smaller golf outings. Also, the expansion would give us a little bit of a better marketing tool. Currently, when a bride walks in to the clubhouse, she'll see a restaurant-style seating, just common tables with placemats and menus. With this expansion, we would allow the bar to be, or we would allow the banquet facility to be able to be set up, so that way the bride can envision, what will it look like on my special night, instead of the current restaurant theme that she may see right now. Not only with that marketing, but another benefit to having that set up, it would create less staff time. To break down a wedding of 220, change the tables out, the aprons and things of that nature, we would be able to eliminate some of that time that staff spends on that. Going on to special events, we have some key special events at the clubhouse, like the fish fry, the Mother's Day brunch, girls' night out. And these events are typically sold out. So having the extra seating available would add, would be able to increase the amount of people that come in and purchase the, purchase those special events. League nights, we have some nights where, weather permitting and.
Scott?
Yes.
I was just curious, on the fish fry and Mother's Day brunch, some of these events, do we have any idea how many people we turn away? Especially for like a Mother's Day brunch, do we sell that out all the time? Bob, you're on the clock.
Usually, usually Mother's Day and Easter are usually booked probably a week out.
So a week ahead of time, it's completely.
Correct. So we're going to fill those extra seats.
Okay. And what about the Friday fish fry?
I don't think we turn anybody away. I think it would just give us the opportunity to service the whole thing and go through a lot faster. And sometimes when we're on a wait, I gotta believe, maybe sometimes people are thinking that, geez, Bartlett Hills is really busy between six and seven. Maybe, maybe we're going to go ahead and pass, or go real early, or go a little bit later. You might be able to handle more people once they get accustomed to the fact that our occupancy is bigger.
Good. Thanks.
And going on to league nights, there's certain nights when you have several golfers or smaller outings or leagues. And if it's one of those days where it's 45 degrees, or if it's 90 degrees, those patrons are not, probably not going to sit outside. So we'd be able to capture some of those additional golfers. And a bigger loungery will allow for more people. So really, that would be about capturing the golfers that are already out there that may use a different venue for the nineteenth hole, but they would decide to stay with us at Bartlett Hills. And going, continuing off that theme of the nineteenth hole, we feel like having a little more space and additional televisions. There's always some requests from our Saturday and Sunday golfers, you know, you've only got one game on, is there any way to get an additional game or an additional television? Something like that would kind of keep people at home, we feel. And so to tie this all together and to look at the numbers, with the bar expansion and the dining room expansion, we do feel that the return on that investment, the one that is budgeted for $250,000, would be approximately five to seven years, with your bar lounge being actualized right off the bat, and your dining room taking about a year, year and a half to cycle due to the events that are already scheduled, and your advertising of the size of that room. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
How confident are we of the $250,000 price tag for the addition?
Well, we're going to require a three-minute meeting and lay out all the requirements, and hopefully then it will come in, but obviously it's more.
Without a bid, I think the answer is not very comfortable. A bid will make us comfortable.
So it could be more?
Absolutely.
Could it be less?
Absolutely.
That would be a much better answer. I feel like we have gained some measure of success at the golf course, thanks to the hard work of the people over there, some change in business practices, that it seems like the golf course is finally getting to the point where now we're breaking even, perhaps even making some money. And that is a wonderful thing. Maybe this expansion, this expenditure of almost a quarter of a million dollars, maybe it's too much right now. So I would, I would just throw that out there. I think perhaps it is too much right now. We have the issues with the tax levy that we have to monitor closely. And I want to give Bartlett Hill the opportunity to succeed on its merits, as these people, they're working very hard to make it work for us. So I'd like to see it succeed on its own merits before we sink even more money into it.
I would just, after doing, after doing a little research on the not.com, I don't know if anybody's ever visited the not, that's the wedding, and theweddingreport.com, I was curious, because after you got through with this information, I guess what I was requesting initially was if we could find the number of, with these extra bookings, I think that's the bulk of the extra money that we're talking about here, with these extra bookings we're predicting, do we know that the demand is out there? So what I was hoping to get from staff was, we've low, you know, we've narrowed this down within a 10 or 15, 20-mile radius of Bartlett, you know, these other venues offer X, but we also understand that 75, just to guess, 75% of the weddings are over 200?
It's, over 200 is a much, much smaller percentage. I think the key, and you had asked us the average size of weddings, and that number is difficult to get. And one of the issues that we have is when a bride or a corporation gives us a call at Bartlett Hills, and they say, what's your capacity? But when we say two to 210, and they decline that, we don't know if that's a size of 300 or 400. One thing we also don't know is when they look in our advertisements and it says two to 10, the people that look in our advertisements that pass that over. So it's a real difficult number to judge. But as far as weddings, over 200 people, it is a much smaller percentage in the average-sized wedding.
I know you were looking, excuse me, I know you're looking for that number specifically. So what I did is I went around and found other venues that can do up to 250 people, the Arboretum, some of the other folks too. And they had a real good feeling for what percentage of your total amount of weddings, one out of whatever, fell into that category of 200 to 250, which is really essentially what we'd be talking about.
Yeah. That's the key right here.
And the number to that, after talking to three facilities, one was one in 10, one was one in 12, and one was one in 15.
Okay. So, and how many weddings do we hold a year?
Depends on the year, 50 to 70.
So that's best-case scenario, it's one in 10, which means we would get five additional, going with those numbers, you get five additional, not eight additional.
But you're going to have other, other events there, like room rental events, some other items that are going to be in there too, that aren't under the wedding category.
Yeah, I understand that. That's a good point.
And mayor, part of that eight that we came up with, we took your number and we looked at that, but there's also a percentage of brides that come in that might be uneasy with, when they envision the room.
They're right on the edge.
Right, exactly. So that, that number also factored into there.
But going to the not also, because that's the site that we use regularly, the average amount of invitees to a wedding in the metropolitan area here, not counting Chicago, is 175, and the average wedding total is 140.
Yeah, 138. That's nationwide. The average wedding in DuPage though, which I would imagine is much larger, the not says is 243 to 253. So we would be capturing more in DuPage. Not that my daughter's close or anything yet. With that being said, I think you guys did great research here, but it's, I have a tendency to favor trustee Ranky, because I think Bob did a great job of implementing some things, and I'm not sure the proof is yet fulfilled with all those changes. And it seemed like it was trending really well. So I would, I think I would be in favor of waiting and seeing how some of those changes that we've implemented work out. But I'd be curious to see, and I, but I also think there's some merit in expanding that bar area, because I've been out there many times. And when you go to a place like that, the rule of thumb is 70% full is appearing full. You know, when you, it doesn't have to be packed to the brim. If you're going to walk in and you see 70%, then you know, maybe only one bartender, you're perceiving that that is full. You know, if you, if you got three people and there's only one place that has two chairs, you're out of there. So there's some merit on both sides.
I would agree with trustee Ranky as well, that I've appreciated seeing the change. And we've always, just as a board, always wondered just to see the golf course break even, just not lose money. And so then it becomes the issue of needs and wants and needs. I mean, obviously the bar issue is somewhat of a need, but we've got to weigh that out between, you know, wants and needs. Is it, it's great to have the expansion, to see things with more possibilities, but if we can hold off a little bit, I don't think that would be ultimately a bad thing.
So then is it the consensus then of the board that we hold off for a year maybe? Till next year? Reevaluate then?
Or do we want to revisit this in January? When do we do our planning?
Maybe, maybe January?
You can revisit this one whenever you'd like. We've started the process, so whenever you want.
Well, given that there seems to be interest in holding off, why don't we wait a year?
Let me ask you a question before you do that, trustee Ranky, to Paul. When people, you say it's a 12 to 18-month lead time in the wedding planning. Those people are planning way more advanced than I did, but my guess would be 10 months, you know? I don't know, maybe not. But that being said, bear in mind, board, that if we wait till like a year from now, you're actually pushing, and we find out the same information that we have now, that, you know, that weddings are getting a little bit bigger maybe, we're missing out on quite a bit of business, then we're missing out on three years of business. So I would like, I would, I would be in favor of not waiting a year. I would be in favor of looking at this again when we're coming up into budgeting time.
January.
Yes.
January makes sense?
Yes.
I'd also like to see a little harder number. You know, we're kind of throwing darts at a board.
A harder cost to get the expansion.
But it might be 180, it might be 370. We really don't know.
And price out one of those screens that you hit against.
We did that.
Okay.
That, we'll certainly move towards that. Obviously, we can come in a little bit closer, but a bid is going to tell us. You know, in terms of the construction of the banquet facility, this really needs to happen in the winter. We had this scheduled, if you were going to go ahead with it, that we would begin the construction immediately after the last Christmas party and have it ready to open in the spring, before the spring comes. So it probably then, we can look at it, but it probably won't be until the next year then anyhow, because of the timing of the construction.
Did we earmark this 250,000 in last year's budget?
We did.
Coming out of the building fund and not the golf?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think honestly.
Just from a timing standpoint, I wanted to.
Yeah. I understand you, you guys want to wait and get, get them on the firmer footing with the golf course we're covering, but I think if we just wait, it's going to take longer for them to, to do that.
And I did read that it was eight weeks. It's like, wow, they can get this eight weeks and, you know, how many, you said 70 weddings and events, or is that 70 weddings?
50.
It averages between 50 and 70 a year, so use 60 as a guideline.
Okay. For the next year, one year from today, how many of those 52 weeks are booked?
That's tough, well, that's difficult to say too, because we've kind of had a difficult time booking some of the events already, because we really can't answer the question properly for next year, as far as what's your capacity going to be. I would say, I would say the answer to that would be about half of them would be correct.
So there's still potential that, you know, we get a lot of 200 plus.
There is.
Last minute or towards the end of the year.
More likely in effect next year.
We start getting return on the larger numbers. I don't know, maybe we don't wait till January. I mean, is there, can you, if we act within the next two months, we can still, well, how long's the bid's going to take? How long do we usually?
We, we think we're just about there in terms of making a decision, so that we can, you know, finalize the documents. We're ready to go to bid, but it's still going to take a couple of months for bid process.
We were going to start in, in January or right after Christmas?
First week of January.
Usually, the way the bookings would go, we'd have about half booked going into the holiday season. Then between Christmas and Valentine's Day, as people get engaged, they want to get married in the current year, they fill in the remaining dates of the year that we're talking about. Our problem is going to be for the year coming up, that we're going to be under construction when they're going to be viewing the place January and February, and that might somewhat have an adverse effect to the coming up year.
Well, my question is, can we, is, do we have to give the green light for this to get bids? Can we get bids and then revisit this in December?
That's a good question.
And it will be a go, okay, start in three weeks, if it passes.
Trustee Martin, I think you bring up a good, a good point. Just one of the concerns is on the food and beverage side is, clients are waiting, clients are waiting to book, and they're thinking about whether or not they'd like to make Bartlett Hills the home for their special evening. So, so waiting is, is a little problematic, but certainly if that's the consensus.
We either wait two or three months, or we wait another year. So there's no middle ground, because you can't build in the summer.
What we can, what we need to be able to is tell them, yes, we are going on and progressing with this, or we are going to make a lot for here, as we do as Scott said, we do have clients sitting out there waiting.
I understand that, but I'm also trying, given the courtesy that, I mean, they want to see more facts. And I get it. I, that's a lot of money.
Thanks, Mike.
I think, I'm sorry.
Where we go? I think my take at this point on this, after, after hearing some very good comments, is that we're absolutely right, or you're absolutely right, that staff made some phenomenal strides in turning, not turning it around, but bringing it up to what we, our expectations were as far as not losing money and maybe even turning a little profit. But a part of those recommendations from staff too was, hey, you know, we really kind of need this expansion. And I think we need to weigh that recommendation along with all of the other recommendations and all the other actions that they've taken to get us where we are today. This is not a project that, you know, I don't think it's easy for us to stretch out. I think we either got to pull the trigger or shelve it. There's, we can't keep playing it around. So my suggestion is put it on a vote and let's, let's vote it.
Right. Let's do a straw poll and.
Well, either straw poll or put it on a full, full board agenda for next meeting or whatever.
I think you could do a straw poll this evening if you're ready for that. You don't have to vote on the actual going out to bid at a board meeting. You could direct us this evening by a straw poll, and we can go out to bid. Ultimately, the bids come back to you. But, you know, I don't think we want, it's a good idea to just send it out to bid to get pricing and not really be interested in going forward with the project.
Right. Because there's going to be a tremendous amount of work involved with that, false expectations. We want to create some certainty in the market. So my suggestion is, why don't we do a quick poll, wait or not wait at the committee level here? And if the decision is that we don't wait, then we'll take it to the board and, you know, vote.
Take it to the board to vote to get bids, or instruct staff to get bids now, and then the next board meeting or two, it would be probably three meetings from now before. the next board meeting or two, it would be probably three meetings from now before bids were back in, right? I'm guessing. So I agree with Trusty Shipman that, you know, we either do it or we don't do it, and so straw poll it now, go out and get bids. I don't see any, any reason why we can't go out and get bids, and then when they come back, that's part of the concerns here, is is it going to be way over? When they come back, we make a decision.
Yeah, if it's way over, then we shelve it.
Yeah.
And my, my straw at this point would be, let's go ahead and begin the movement forward.
I would wait.
I would move forward.
Let's go forward.
Forward.
Can you go out and get some bids then?
Okay, so that is it for financing golf tonight.
That being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Trusty Cammer, seconded by Trusty Ranky. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trusty Cammer?
Yes.
Arbenel?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.